Good morning and welcome to the December 20th, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County, and this is our last regular commission meeting of 2017. So this morning, I would like to invite Cindy Lee with Environmental Resources to talk about an upcoming program.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Cindy Lee with Environmental Resources, and I'm excited to announce that we are doing our annual Christmas tree mulching this year. All information can be found on the Sedgwick County website. You can pull it up, and it's one of these that we'll go through. Here it is. You guys can go to the website to pull up all the information, or it'll be printed out on the papers, and Corinne and Kate will be putting it up on all of our social media as well. We'll have 10 locations within the city of Wichita and 12 locations in the rest of the county. I can't stress enough how important it is to remind everybody to remove your lights and your ornaments. We can't mulch that up. And while you're there, make sure to pick up some mulching as well. Questions?
Okay, well, thank you for that report, and we're glad to have the dates we can see clearly. But how many locations, did you say?
So we'll have 10 within the city of Wichita and 12 in the rest of the county, so 22 altogether.
Okay, so easily accessible, and they can mulch their tree and then pick up mulch, right?
Yes.
And do not bring artificial trees.
No, do not bring artificial trees. We can't mulch those.
All right. Well, thank you for that update. We appreciate it.
And one final announcement. As this is our last meeting before the New Year's, I would like to invite Alora Forshi to talk about the non-emergency line.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alora Forshi, I am your 911 Director. As we are moving quickly through the holiday season, we are fast approaching onto New Year's Eve, which is another very busy night for us at 911. Because we anticipate high call volume, we are enacting our non-emergency fireworks/nuance line again this year. That number 316-290-1011, that's 2901011, will be active from 9:00 PM on New Year's Eve until 1:00 AM on January 1st. The intention with this line is to handle those calls that are going to be coming in that are heavy on nights like New Year's Eve, such as loud noise complaints, party complaints, fireworks complaints, things like that that are, like I said, prevalent on this holiday. Anything that is providing or has an imminent threat to life or property, we want people to call in on 911. But these are the calls that we want to take on the non-emergency line that aren't so imminent, that aren't so threatening, that we want to make public safety aware of, but can kind of hold behind those emergency calls. I want to remind everybody also that you can text into 911. Again, you just text 911, no area code, nothing else that needs to go into your 2 window. But we ask that people not text in those non-emergencies because those text calls are being answered by 911 dispatchers who are taking emergency calls and texts. So please, if our citizens could help us out on this holiday to make 911 a successful tool or asset to have available for our citizens who are in real need for emergencies, and utilize that non-emergency number, again, 316-290-1011.
Well, Alora, thanks for that reminder, and we are going to try to publicize that beyond this announcement, but somehow newspaper and radio and so forth, is that correct?
That is correct. We will be working with our media partners. We will be pushing it out on social media. We have a communications department, as you know here, that does a great job of publicizing that. And absolutely, we've worked with our public safety agency partners to push that out in their own communities and spreading the word far and wide.
All right, thank you. And thanks to you and all your staff for superintending over that important activity of county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't see any, so thanks.
All right, happy holidays, Commissioners.
And with these two announcements, I will let you start the meeting.
All right, Kate, thank you for that introduction, and I want to welcome everyone who's in our meeting today and also those who are watching by way of television. And with that, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, December 20th, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Dave Fulton, St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Shall we pray? Good Lord, your psalmist sings out, "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and let all that is within me bless thy holy name." Good Lord, you bless this moment with the radiance of life. Each one here is a miracle of your creative power, goodness, and grace. Good Lord, we pray for our life together in community. Grant us the courage to embrace the core values of the active citizenship movement in Europe, the values of mutual respect and nonviolence. Let mutual respect be the hallmark of how we interact in our community. Mutual respect between races, between sexes, between political philosophies. Let nonviolence in thought, word, and deed be affirmed as the inner character of our Kansas home. Good Lord, bless all who serve in the halls of government. Grant all wisdom and passion for the common good. We thank you for the sacred season, and we pray for spiritual renewal in our Kansas home on the range, in our great nation, and in our world. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and let all that is within me bless thy holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Fulton, thank you for being with us this morning. Merry Christmas. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Chairman Enry?
Present.
And next item?
Public agenda.
I have no list of anyone who signed up to speak this morning on a public agenda. Is there anyone present that wanted to? Okay, sir. You want to make a comment?
Just, yeah, real quick.
On an agenda item?
Well, actually, on an appointment. So can I do it right after he's appointed?
Sure, yes. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Daniel Cruz to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item A is a resolution appointing Mr. Daniel Cruz to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. That position has been vacant since the fall of 2015. Commissioner O'Donnell is recommending that Mr. Cruz be appointed for a term that would expire on December 19 of 2021. I'm told that Mr. Cruz will be present and is ready to be sworn, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
All right, Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move that we adopt the resolution and appoint Daniel Cruz to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Cruz for being willing to serve in this capacity. So thank you.
I will second the motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And County Clerk Kelly Arnold is here to swear in Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
All right, raise your hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board till Hallelujah. Agreed. Congratulations.
Just like to thank Mr. O'Donnell and the rest of the board for this opportunity to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. And Mr. Theo Harris, did you want to make a brief comment?
Yes, George Theo Harris. I wanted to thank Michael O'Donnell for stepping up. We have nine on the board, and we get 10, and we're going to go to 10 now, and we're going to be making some big changes to the animal care, and I really appreciate. Now, we've got a full board to go forward, and you'll be seeing some changes coming in the next couple, three months. Now, I don't know about Daniel, but I'm not really sure he could pick a dog out of a lineup, but I think he'll be all right. He gives his 10, so thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Item B, resolution reappointing Joseph Pager as nominated by Mayor Longwell to represent the first city class position of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, again. Items B and C actually both pertain to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. Item B is a resolution reappointing Joe Pager as nominated by Mayor Longwell to serve in the first-class city position on that committee. Mr. Pager has been serving in that position already, and his new term would expire December 31 of 2019. Item C is a resolution reappointing Zach McHatten and Randy Parker to that same committee. Both gentlemen were renominated by the Sedgwick County Association of Cities. Mr. McHatten for the second-class city position, and Mr. Parker for the third-class city position. Both gentlemen have been serving already, and their terms would also expire December 31 of 2019. I would urge adoption of these resolutions. I'm told that none of these folks will be here, but you might want to inquire.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt both resolutions, item B and C.
Second.
Thank you. And we will ask, I don't see any of these individuals here, and I'm getting a little out of order. First thing we should do is call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And I want to thank those gentlemen for being willing to serve. I know Mr. Parker has been serving since I became a Commissioner, so he's been thoroughly involved in solid waste management, but we appreciate their willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item D, resolution transferring control and operation of work release program.
Good morning, Commissioners, and happy holidays. Glenda Martins, Director of the Division of Corrections. We're before you today, the Sheriff and I, and he'll be up here in just a second, to talk about a proposal that we have that we're presenting today to transfer the custody of clients from the Sheriff's Operation and Control to the Division of Corrections Work Release Program. We were really talking about the reality of what was happening with the overcrowding in the jail, and we came up with this proposal. The clients would be transferred to the Division of Corrections to the adult residential facility at 623 East Elm. And we had recently had the skip program, the juvenile program that went away, that left some open space, and so we're wanting to transfer 100 of those clients over to our division to a new corrections work release program. During that transition, we will be moving those clients over, and when they get to our program, they will have intake processes, they will have intensive supervision officers that will monitor their progress, they will receive different services that include offender workforce development, substance abuse treatment, testing, and monitoring. And the hopes that we will accomplish is to have those clients be more successful so that when they are released back into the public, they will not reoffend again. So that is our transition plan. We hope to get that progress started immediately after, we hope to have your approval today. And we do have some startup things that we have to accomplish to make that happen, and that's what we're moving towards.
Well, Glenda, thank you for that report, and I'd like to just say that the Commission sincerely appreciates this creative approach to utilizing our resources to our advantage and at the same time, providing what I think is better, more responsible services to those who are detained. The idea that we're going to move these folks on work release to a new location and then provide services that will help them become better citizens and reduce recidivism is creative, the right thing to do, positive, and just want to commend you and the Sheriff for seeing this opportunity and taking advantage of it. Now, as being a crass materialist, I would say that I'm also very pleased that this should reduce substantially our out-of-county costs.
Yes.
And that's a definite impact on our budget, because 100 folks at $35 a day, pretty soon that becomes a big number.
Yes, we've estimated around 800,000 to decrease costs for out-of-county.
Well, excellent, excellent creative thinking, positive for those individuals and positive for the county, so thank you for that. Commissioners, is there any question or comment? Pardon me?
Sheriff.
Oh, the sheriff is here, thank you. I don't hear very well. You've got to speak out. All right. Sheriff Easter?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to talk about this today. As Glenda has said already, Community Corrections approached us in reference to easing some of our out-of-county housing. Work release is located at 701 West Harry. Currently, it's equipped to hold 157 inmates. However, our population is usually around 100. They had an opportunity to possibly take those 100 inmates out of work release and house them with them, which then would have created open space to bring back out-of-county housing. The inmates are housed out-of-county. One thing that also is a key to this is currently with our setup, we basically monitor if they go to work or not, if they went out and applied. There's really no services that we provide. These are some of the same clientele that Glenda's folks monitor on a daily basis and give a lot more services, so we're hoping to see recidivism be reduced with this population. In 2017, we had a CIP project because we already recognized that the work release facility was being underutilized, and so we took CIP money and converted one of the pods to be able to hold 48 inmates. We're currently holding 40 inmates in that particular pod that would have been out-of-county. The total cost savings for a year just for 48 inmates out of out-of-county cost is $613,000 just for 48. Currently, 123 inmates as of today are at work release, so it's a little bit higher, but it's the holidays, so judges are a little bit more free with putting people on work release. 16 of those are held on city charges, 86 on county charges, and 21 are held on other municipality charges. So those are folks from the other communities that also do work release. In 2017, we had an average daily population of 1,423 inmates, and that's as of December 1st. The average out-of-county population was 204 a day. However, during the summertime, we were as high as 260 inmates out of county. With the proposed CIP amendment, we believe we can house between 180 and 197 inmates in the work release facility, which will be renamed the Jail Annex. If we house 190 inmates at the Jail Annex and we have to ship 70 inmates out of county, the cost would be $2,450 a day. Instead of $9,100 a day, we currently are paying for 260 inmates out of county. So basically, that number is at 260, we would only be housing 70 inmates out of county instead of 260 at our high points. So obviously, that's a cost savings there. In this proposal, we're asking for the CIP money, working with Tanya and her folks, was $1,026,000 to upgrade the facility because it is not a jail, and we have to convert that into a jail where folks are safe, secure, and so is the public from escapes. So that project would be approximately $1,026,000. With our current 2017 estimated budget savings, we think we can cover that cost with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office budget savings. It's the end of the year, we have some other bills coming in, but we're roughly right there, so we're asking for that, our budget savings to be converted over to cover those costs. 2018, the current budget is 2.7 million for out-of-county housing. With the numbers that we're looking at, as of today, I only have 167 out-of-county, so we'd actually have 33 open beds inside the facility if it's up and running today. There's no way to eliminate all of the out-of-county housing. When we reach our max of 180 to 190 inmates on work release, we have to go out-of-county. There's no doubt about it. So we won't be able to eradicate the entire $2.7 million budget in 2019, but we estimate probably at least $2 million of that can be converted over for Glenda's use for their operations. So I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, well, thank you for that extra information, and you know, I think it's clear that if we're going to affect a better program and save money in the long run, that we have to expect there's some investment that has to go in on the front side. But the fact that it can be managed inside the current budget is really gratifying. We appreciate, once again, the two of you working together and coming up with a very creative solution. We have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the comments that you just made as well, but I wanted to just draw out a couple of points. I think I understand the answers, but let's just clarify. Did you guys already have some meetings in the community that some people come out and you presented to them, and you kind of have their support at this point? Can you please talk about that a little bit?
Yes, researching this issue, we had to go in front of the DAB board and MAPD or PCD because we had to get a conditional use for that to be a jail, not just work release. So we went to the DAB board meeting. There was quite a few citizens there. They were concerned about it being a jail. They were also concerned about the aesthetics of it. We were able to talk to them and explain to them that right now, work release inmates are in and out of that building all the time, so they're in the neighborhoods. This particular proposal, these folks aren't getting out unless we bring them back to the jail and release them from the jail. There's no visitation over there, so there will not be any attorneys or family members or anything like that that will be coming in and out of the facility. The only thing coming in at that facility is the deputies and the inmates that are transported by our commission deputies to the back door and unloaded into the facility. Aesthetics-wise, they were afraid that it would look like a prison, that there would be fence all the way around it, those type of things. There's four particular pods inside that facility. We have to give them, for two reasons, we have to give them the opportunity to be outside for a little bit, and in case of a fire, we have to have a place to put them. So around each pod is some fencing with some barbed wire on top for those times that we have to put them outside. But it's very little fencing, some areas about 30 yards worth of fencing just around those particular pods, so there's not a fence all the way around it. We also put fencing up around the, or will be, around the backside where the driveway comes in, because that's where all the deliveries are made, and that's where the inmates will be taken through that particular gate to be placed inside the facility.
I think you have a great answer to that. Question on the dollars of this, is that the numbers you relate in terms of the cost per day and some of the savings, does that relate to just the charges that would be charged to the county for the inmates, or does that include things like vehicles and gas and labor to transport back and forth?
Yeah, these numbers here that I gave you today does not include transportation costs. So the cost of the deputies going back and forth every day to out-of-county housing, some of which is as far away as Meade County, which is about four hours away, so the gas, the upkeep, all that stuff is not estimated into this cost savings.
So my opinion is the savings to the county is actually significantly higher than what we just talked about.
Very well could be.
That's a really good point. And then just, I'm interested, I think the public might be interested as well, but can you kind of just ballpark, hope for a timeline? How long until this whole thing gets implemented and is up and running?
What we're being told right now, if we can start right away, which I'm hoping this passes today, so the money can be there, six to nine months of construction on the inside of the building. I'll add one other thing, too, because of the population base down there, the 190, we're going to be asking for a nurse to be placed down there so that we don't have to take these inmates back and forth to the jail, but we'll discuss that during the 2019 budget.
Certainly. And then, let me just commend you for innovative solutions and for finding ways to be more efficient, more effective, saving taxpayer dollars, and providing better services to our community. I think it's a tremendous proposal, and I'm glad to support it this morning.
Well, I appreciate that. The proposal actually came from Glenda and Jay Holmes, and we thought it was a very good option to the issues that we have, so all the credit goes to them, actually.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add my voice to the accolades. I think this is a wonderful proposal. I think that it both fixes a lot of problems that you have in the jail and both with corrections financially, but also it just makes a whole lot of sense as far as inmate location. So I think this is a home run all the way around, so we're very blessed to have both the Sheriff and Glenda working on this project together, so it's wonderful to support this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion yet?
No, sir, we do not.
I would move that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Is any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. Thank you, Sheriff. Glenda, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Item E, funding agreement with Doc's Friends.
Good morning, Commissioners. William Dear, Assistant County Counselor. We have before you a funding agreement with Doc's Friends, which is a not-for-profit corporation that was set up for the preservation of Doc, which is a B-29 Super Fortress airplane which was built in Wichita. And this agreement would essentially provide $200,000 in funding to that not-for-profit. They're in the process of negotiating an agreement with Wichita Airport Authority to do a hangar project out of the airport, which would house the Doc and provide for additional space for educational purposes. I know one of the concerns was the long-term arrangement. I was working with the attorney that's representing Doc's Friends, which is this not-for-profit corporation, and they have assured me that that lease will be for no less than 25 years. It's actually probably going to be longer. And so, you know, the alternative would be we could approve less funding or not approve the motion at all. So I stand for any questions?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a probably the longest presentation I've had since I've been on the Commission. First of all, Doc is a very, very historic aircraft. This aircraft was built in Wichita. The crews were actually trained here in Kansas. I grew up in Great Bend. The airport at Great Bend was where the first B-29 combat unit for World War II, the 58th Bombardment Wing was trained. They also trained crews in Harrington, Smoky Hill, which is now Schilling, Wichita Army Airfield, McConnell Air Force Base, Topeka Army Airfield, and a field called Walker Army Airfield, which was at Hayes. So not only was this aircraft built here, the crews were trained here before they went over to fight. Total of 3,970 of these aircraft were built. Of those, 1,644 were built here in Wichita. The other locations where B-29s were built were Renton, Washington, Atlanta, Georgia, and Omaha, Nebraska. But today, out of all those almost 4,000 aircraft that were built, only 22 survive, and only two of those 22 that survive are flyable. One is Fifi, and the other is Doc. I've had an opportunity during my lifetime to see some of these that exist. One of the... One of the probably most famous B-29 aircraft is the Smithsonian. That's the Enola Gay. If you ever get a chance to go to Dayton, Ohio, at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base is Boxcar. Up in Omaha, outside of Omaha is the Sack Museum, and Lucky Lady is there. If you get up to Rapid City, South Dakota, at Ellsworth Air Force Base, you've got Legal Eagle Two. And down at the Nuclear Museum, down at Kirtland Air Force Base, New Mexico, is an unnamed B-29. But the B-29 was extremely critical in the war in the Pacific. Twenty-first Bomber Command under General Curtis LeMay really turned the tide of the battle in the Pacific. I'm a longtime Strategic Air Command guy. Spent most of my career with Strategic Air Command. I did have the opportunity to meet General Curtis LeMay, and this is his book, and it's signed by him. Unfortunately, he passed away in 1990, but he's the guy that turned the tide in the Pacific, and then he was the second commander of Strategic Air Command and was the one that brought our B-29 forces into Strategic Air Command to be our airframe nuclear deterrent. Heritage in the military is something that's very, very important. We remember our history. If you look at any of the flags of our different armed forces, you're going to see battle streamers hanging from those flags. Not only that, we try and remember the men and women that fought and died for us and served in our nation. Doc is really a critical part of our nation's history. It's a critical part of Wichita history. It's a critical part of Kansas history. As I showed, we trained our crews on B-29s here in Kansas. I'm not sure how many of you know how many sacrifices that the men and women who flew those B-29s made for our country. And when I say women, women did fly B-29s. They didn't fly them in combat, but we had an organization called the Women's Air Force Service Pilot, or WASPs, that did ferry those aircraft to relieve the men that were going into battle. So we had both men and women flying these aircraft. But I think that it's important that you understand the heritage and history of what went into that. And so I've had Tony put together a, actually, there's about a 36-minute film. I've asked Tony to extract parts of that. They'll show a 600-aircraft B-29 raid taking off, and then show what happens when those planes are coming back. This clip runs about eight, nine minutes, but I hope you bear with me so that you see the sacrifices of the men and women that went into this and why something like Doc is so critical. For that, Kate, are you going to run the film for me?
To veteran crews, it's just another day's work. One more 1,500-mile haul up and down the ruddy Pacific. Fifteen hours, 7,000 gallons, four engines, 11 guys. Knock wood. A water jump across 20 degrees of the globe. A continent of ocean. It's like taking off in Mexico for targets in Canada. The 314th is airborne. Those B-29 takeoffs are a tough sweat. That first long moment is the worst. Some swear it takes luck, like a wife stocking, to beat it. At 10:00, 100 miles north, two more B-29 wings prepare for takeoff. 134 aircraft from the 58th Wing. 100 more from the 313th Wing. At Saipan, a few minutes later, the Veteran 73rd Wing lines up for takeoff. The last B-29 is airborne at 15:40. The tower at Saipan relays this information to the controller back at Guam. That runway is a beautiful sight, as they let down with engines out, low on gas, or beat up by flak and fighters. In three months, nearly 2,000 crippled or gas-shy B-29s havened at Iwo. You can understand why those four fanboys bless those Marines, and even name their planes after them. The lucky ones are fueled and depart for home bases in an hour. But Iwo still has its hazards. Weather can turn this station into a hopeless daymare. Fog and quick overcast often blacks out the airstrip during these crucial periods. That means orders to bail out. Or with luck, a B-29 might drop in for a copybook ditching. From here, you can see how the cloud cover up there smothers the runway, and realize what one pilot went through. Sometimes, a battle-scarred bomber staggers back to Iwo, only to flatten out at the last By some miracle, the whole crew got away from their stations to safety before 2,000 gallons of flaming gas enveloped them. Firefighters risked their lives to save the ship. This, too, takes courage beyond the line of duty. Far to the south, most of the wings are nearing their basins. Exhausted crews wait out the last endless hour, when time seems to stop. Their position is radioed in, and the controller gets word of the approaching flight. At last, the familiar Arianas appear on the horizon. The bombers fly across Guam and turn into the landing pad. Fifteen hours ago, they left the other end of that runway. It's a pleasure to be back. It's good to feel the sudden humid heat, to be among the living, swapping details with the ground crew. Flak, fighters, the close call, the one that got away. But some of those B-29 crews won't be able to talk it over today. The rescue squads tear away the hot metal. Somehow, in that burning wreckage, a man has lived to feel those eager, gallant hands. One life saved and 10 lost. That's part of today's toll. And there were many other days and nights that took their toll of young American lives in the service of our relentless, expanding air power.
First of all, I want to talk, thank Tony and Don for putting this together. This is actually about a 35, 36-minute film that they cleaned up considerably, actually, and put that together, but I thought it was important so that people could really see what we're trying to preserve with this B-29. Doc is a national treasure, only one of two flyable B-29s in the world. A hangar will preserve and provide a learning opportunity here in Wichita and Kansas. It's an economic development opportunity also through tourism. It's a part of our fabric, of our community, our state, and our nation. The agreement that we have before us will guarantee that Doc will be here for at least 25 years in Sedgwick County. So therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for $200,000 to preserve Doc, guarantee its continued presence in Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a couple of comments as well, and first of all, let me say I'll support the motion, but I appreciate seeing that video. Actually, I'd like to go see the rest of that now, but from my perspective, this is an issue I've been following for as long as I've known it's been around. This Doc program's been in Wichita for quite a long time, and I used to work out at the Boeing facility, and I watched for more than 10 years where thousands and thousands of Wichitaans, people from our community, people from Derby, and I assume also all over Sedgwick County, maybe even beyond that, would spend countless hours out there giving their time to restore this airplane, and it's extremely special. In fact, I would say it's a priceless possession, and we can't even put a cost on what that airplane's worth at this point, because it represents such a significant part of our history nationally. But anyway, thinking about how important this is, I agree that this is an economic development opportunity. I believe that people will travel to Wichita to see this very unique airplane. We're going to capture some of our history, but beyond that, I'll say that my wife has family members that, going back several generations, I guess, as long as we've been building airplanes, they've been involved in building airplanes. And some of her grandmothers, or I guess at least one of her grandmothers, maybe others, were involved in this particular airplane, and she calls herself Rosie the Riveter. She was involved in that, so. To me, it's just a tremendous history. My father-in-law is one that spent, I don't know how many hours, enormous number of hours out there working on this airplane, donating his time. I think about how much money it costs taxpayers to build and purchase and manufacture these airplanes to begin with. It's in the billions. Even at that time, it was an enormous amount of money that taxpayers put into this particular airplane. And to think that we're down to just two of these that fly at this point, I think we need to preserve this. So this is a small amount that we can do today that's going to preserve this for our community for a very long time. I'd like to recognize, you know, I know Wichita's actually put some money towards this as well, so I feel like we're being partners with Wichita. I think that's great. I think this is about quality of life. I know that's important to this community. I've heard from people on that issue, so I know that's a very, very important thing. When we can do that, we ought to do it. Anyway, so with that, I could probably continue making other points, but let me just say, I think this is the right thing for us to do, and I appreciate the opportunity to support Doc, and I look forward to seeing it actually housed in a brand-new hangar out there and have people be able to go out there and visit that and enjoy part of our history. So I'll be glad to second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment here from Commissioners or questions? Commissioner Renzo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a veteran of the United States Army and the Persian, Afghan, and Iraq wars, I truly appreciate the history between this aircraft and others like it. That being said, I have concerns about the county spending money on this particular You know, a few months ago, we raised one of our fees because we said we didn't have enough money to pay for some stormwater drainage projects. There was a lot of consternation about that, so we raised the fees. I think it's going to bring in a little over, around $200,000, maybe a little less, maybe a little bit more. And I voted against raising that fee because I knew then, as I do now, that we have the money to do those things if we just prioritize things. And some of the actions we've taken last week and this week demonstrate that very clearly. When things like this come before me, I have to ask the question, can this and should this be funded by the private sector? And in this particular case, the answer is yes. I understand there's a desire to help the city of Wichita build a hangar for privately-owned aircraft, but to this date, everything's been done privately, and I think it should stay that way. I would like to see perhaps a public campaign if we need to raise money, let citizens contribute to this voluntarily. So I'm not going to be supportive of this because I think the project would go ahead without the county's involvement, which I think would be a good thing, and then we'd have the resource available to do the things that only the government can do, and I think we should focus on that and remember that. That being said, I understand the position of my colleagues. I'll just remember, as we go forward and we start hearing more and more discussions about trying to find new ways to raise money and maybe raise taxes, that, you know, if you don't focus on the things that only the government can do, then that's what happens. There again, like I say, my vote today, while I will oppose the county's participation in this, it does not, I fully support Doc and that program, and I would like to see that continue in the private sector, and I think that would be best for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments from the bench? I would ask if there's anyone from the public that wants to make a comment on this particular issue. I don't see anyone rising to speak, so we'll just continue the conversation from the bench. Are there any more comments, Commissioners? I'd make a comment that I believe this project, Mr. Dear, is it six and a half million-dollar project?
That was my understanding. There's been quite a bit of money raised already, and I think they're continuing to do fundraising in the private sector as well.
And presently, as far as I know, the city has committed 900,000, and I anticipate that we're going to commit 200,000, so the public through fundraising is going to come up with 5.4 million.
That's my understanding.
Well, I will be supportive, and I don't see anyone else asking to speak, so if there isn't, and Commissioners, I'll ask the Clerk to call a vote. isn't, then commissioners, I'll ask to call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enrew.
Aye. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item F, Law Enforcement Training Center Agreements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Powell, Deputy County Counselor. I feel like we're in the theme of the season here, bringing gifts to the community, and this will be, I'm happy to present this as your third gift of the agenda today. But what this is, this item represents is the final document, legal documents, which are necessary for closing on the Law Enforcement Training Center building. And I have just a brief history of the law enforcement training program and then a rundown of this project for you, and then I'll make some comments on the individual agreements. So this has been since 1985, the Sheriff's, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office and the Wichita Police Department have cooperated, as well as Sedgwick County Emergency Communications, in having a training center located in a former grade school, 50-0 grade school. And the intent for that facility was that it would be a temporary, temporary location. But some 30 years later, here we are and finally getting a nice facility ready for their occupancy and cooperation in the training. The new facility is located on the Wichita State University Innovation Campus. It'll be three, it's three stories high and approximately 60,000 square feet. It'll allow the sheriff and his staff to train recruits for both detention deputy positions and certified law enforcement officer positions. There'll be a backup facility for emergency communication staff. The collaboration with the Wichita Police Department in training, they can share classrooms to some extent, and they have, they will have offices there for their staff. So the third floor houses the WSU's Criminal Justice Program students, and that will have, as well as offices, so that is in keeping with the theme of their innovation campus, to have a partnership with the students, have the students' involvement, as well as the law enforcement, actual governmental entities having a presence out there. Background of the project, in 2015, the county sought proposals for building a building, a location for the program, and received a response from MWCB, which is the developer that is working with WSIA. WSIA is a nonprofit which was created by WSU for the development of the Innovation Campus. So when the request, or the actual response to the request for proposal was received from MWCB in connection with WSIA, it was accepted, and then we entered into an agreement with the city of Wichita to purchase property, purchase the building. The actual land is owned by WSU or the state. The WSU then leased that ground to the developer, MWCB, excuse me, WSIA leased it to MWCB, who then, we will be accepting that ground lease as our rights to occupy that and the building thereon. So the cooperation that has gone on with the governmental entities is just really, really just unbelievable that we've gotten this far with the city, the county, WSU, WSIA, in making this happen in a fairly short period of time, comparatively speaking, for this kind of cooperation to go on. The specifics on the agreements that are in front of you today, the assignment assumption of the ground sublease agreement, that is where the developer is letting us have access to that ground lease that the developer gained from WSIA, gives us all rights, title, and interest to the ground sublease. I say "us," I mean in the county and the city together jointly. There are some important indemnification provisions in that document. It provides for a 99-year term so that we will have the land for quite some time, only a dollar a year rent. And then it's the uses that are permitted are for law enforcement, educational, operational type activities, and those, you know, ancillary uses. That is the first document. And the next document for your consideration is called the First Amendment to the ground lease. And what that does is it, that ground lease that we are taking from the developer, it would make changes that were specifically tailored to the city and the county's needs. Some of those changes were the delineation of the operating expenses, operating expenses for the first five years are to be absorbed by WSIA, and those include utilities, lawn, landscaping, snow removal, irrigation, fire suppression and monitoring, pest control, parking lot maintenance, non-capital repairs, elevator maintenance. It excludes custodial services. There is an agreement for, or an arrangement to have a Wichita Police Department employee is going to do custodial services there. After the first five years, the tenants will pay, the tenants being city, county, and WSU, because WSU's going to occupy the third floor, so that we will share in the expenses proportionally. And then one of the, one of the other significant, or a couple of the other significant changes to the ground sublease, we will, we will be, we have limitations on the cost pool where we would share, our expenses would be limited in sharing the Innovation Campus repair, maintenance kind of thing. Just a little background on that, there are covenants on the land which are essentially like your homeowner covenants that some of you may have on your house, but they, they control the, how the land is used. And so we have those in place on the Innovation Campus, which is understandable, they want that Innovation Campus to certain, have a certain character. So within that, it required the tenants of the Innovation Campus to share in some of the expenses. And we were able to get, in the ground sublease, we were able to get a limitation to where it would only, those expenses, those common expenses, we would only share in those after the 10th year of our occupancy. And then it would be limited to those areas on the, there's a, there's a map attached to your, to your amendment document, which shows in red, which is essentially the roads that are served, that serve the Law Enforcement Training Center. So we would share in those expenses only. And WSU is allowing us, WSU and WSIA are allowing us free use of their facilities for graduation, sheriff's office graduation activities, some sort of regional training activities, and so they're allowing, allowing that at no charge, up to six of those per year. The parking, we, we had, you know, the parking at WSU sometimes is, it can be very difficult. We had, from the get-go, we had an agreement that 200 to 250 spaces would be solely dedicated to this, to this building, and we have followed through with that. We have, there's a diagram also on that amendment document that shows the arrangement of the parking. There are 95 spaces that are contiguous to the building, and then there were additional 155 that are nearby. Those might be relocated at some point in time later, but then because of the fact that Innovation Campus is under construction, that's, we're one of the first ones out there. So the lease agreement is the third document that I'll be asking you to approve, and it is to allow WSU to occupy that third floor of the building. And it is, it's a two-year term, and we may be coming to you with an amendment later on down the road. That was because of the timing of all the negotiations that we had. But it was requested to be a two-year term by WSU for their needs, and it allows them to occupy that third floor for $1 in rent, and then their expenses will be apportioned. After the first five years, they'll be apportioned according to the occupancy of the building. We had many, many people to thank for the project, although I'm at the podium. There are, Tanya Cole was your project manager on the building, Lindsay Pograzo, your CFO, was instrumental in helping this project come under budget, $160,000 under budget. Tanya expects the furniture fixtures and equipment to be also under budget. We have, of course, the sheriff and Captain Hope were very, very involved in this, in this, and helping it, helping it come to fruition. Alora Forshy, your Emergency Communications Director. Joe Courier, IT was absolutely essential to the project because, as you all know, we can't, we can't work without IT, and this is a huge, huge task to coordinate with WSU and getting their, their needs met as well as ours. Now to give kudos to my boss, my boss, Eric Yost, was instrumental in the very get-go in getting this project going, and as well as, you know, there are multiple agreements were required for this project. I have a whole folder of him, of them here. Only really three of them were I involved in. It was, my predecessor on this project was Misha Jacob-Bourne, and she, she did a lot of that, that heavy lifting. So, and the manager helped us as well when we reached an impasse in some negotiations, and we were able to break through that. So I would, I would ask that you approve these three agreements. If you wish to take them separately, that's, vote separately, that's entirely possible. But if you desire to take them all together, that'd be fine too, and then authorize the chairman to sign.
All right. Thank you, Karen. That's a lot of information and good history on how this developed, and I think we're all pleased that we have finally arrived at this point of completion. Been a lot of discussion, and the intent has always been that we knew we needed a new, modern facility, that our law enforcement officers' training in that old school was virtually an embarrassment for our community. It's just not, it was not adequate, and don't need to say more than that, but we're certainly glad that we've got them a modern facility. We're at the point to do that. So appreciate that presentation, and we have a comment from Commissioner Renzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I remember back in 2015, when I was the chairman, my first meeting with Mayor Longwell, and the very first thing that came up was, what are we going to do about the Law Enforcement Training Center? And we agreed that day to start moving forward on a path to work together and get a new law enforcement training center. It's taken a little bit longer than what we thought it might have, but here we are a few years later, and this is getting close to the end and making it final. And so I want to say I appreciate everyone, both at the county and at the city, that worked on this. I know, as you've said, our legal staff and facilities, and a lot of other people in the sheriff's departments put a lot of time and effort into this, and our DIO has run a lot of, done a lot of things over there. So a lot of work has gone into this, and hopefully, I think in January, we'll be able to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and get it moved in and start using it. So it's been, it's a good project, and we're happy to be here at this time, and I'll make a motion that we take the recommended action.
Thank you. I will second that motion, and we have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, is this, these are three agreements, are these the final documents we need to have completed before we can actually move in and begin utilizing the facility?
Yes, Commissioner Howell, the city of Wichita had considered these on their agenda yesterday and approved, and once we have the county commission's agreement, then we will be ready to move forward on closing tomorrow.
All right, well, thank you. I just want to say, I would like to give appreciation to all of the legal staff that's been involved in this. There's been a lot of people, I think, on city and county, and that have been involved in this, and it's been a very complicated process, but we finally got through it all. So just reading these documents, I'm impressed at the complexity and the detail, what I see within these documents, so I can see that you guys have worked very hard to finalize this and bring this to us today. So thank you for all your good work on that. I also want to say, I'm reminded, I think similar to Commissioner Renzo, I'm reminded that this has been an ongoing discussion, I think, for a very long time. I would say maybe 20 years or so, this has been discussed in the community one way or the other. We've had a number of options that have been considered over that, over the period of time, and some of those were very expensive. And so basically, to see we've able to keep this as a joint training center with the city of Wichita, I think is a tremendous plus for this community, provides synergy, because these are law enforcement officers that have to work together on the streets, and I think that they train together, it's going to be better for the community to continue to do that. And I think we actually saved quite a lot of money in the process over some of the previous proposals, and so this is good for taxpayers, it actually is a facility we'll be very proud of. And one thing I don't think has been said yet, but having this at WSU is going to be connected to the, basically a pipeline of people who may be interested in moving into the law enforcement world, which one of the great big pluses to have this in that location, plus I think it's good for that, for that area of our city to have this, have this there as well. I think that was a very great desire, able to have that location for a number of reasons. And so I'm really proud to go forward today. I think this is a momentous celebration, and I look forward to seeing a ribbon cut, I guess, in early January, at least I hear that, it's the date. I'm looking forward to that as well. So anyway, I'm just really proud of everyone who's been involved in this. We finally got it done, saved a lot of money, and we have a facility to be really proud of. And so I'm glad to support the motion this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Karen, all of our partners, WSU and city, they've already signed these documents?
The, I don't have the actual signature page from WSIA or WSU yet, but my understanding is they've agreed to the terms, and it will be forthcoming, so.
Okay, thank you. Comment from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I do support the motion. I think it's a great opportunity for Wichita, Sedgwick County, and WSU to partner on this. The only question that I have is make sure that the motion, that's going to cover all of the agreements.
Yes.
I understood the motion to cover all the agreements.
Okay. I've got an electronic version that shows Foxtrot Golf and Hotel, and a paper version says Foxtrot and Golf, and I just want to make sure that we're voting on everything at one time.
That was my intent to, if you'd like to separate them, that's fine.
I will support all the lease agreements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very excited about this. Thank you, Karen, Eric, everybody for their work on this. Our friends over at City Hall have been wonderful, and the folks at WSU, Dr. John Tomlin in particular. But I know the sheriff's still here, and I was just wondering if you'd maybe want to come and talk about this, because I know this is a long time coming. But if not, you don't have to. You can stay, you can stay there, but this is, this is really your legacy.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. It has been a long time. We've been out there for 35 years. And Sheriff Hill at the time and Chief Lemunyan were the ones that came up with the concept to combine training, which has been absolutely wonderful for the law enforcement community here, because we are all trained the same. Those deputies and the officers get to know each other right from the beginning in training. It just makes everything more cohesive. We started this discussion quite some time ago, and as Commissioner Howell pointed out, you know, the original concept was $30 million. That was a little bit too much, I think, for everybody to handle. And so over time, with working with the commissioners and the manager and the city of Wichita, we was able to get to a point where the bid process went out, and we decided to go to WSU because of the fact that in the current days, or the current climate we're in with law enforcement, we're not getting a lot of people to apply. And having that pipeline with the criminal justice system and working with Dr. Tomlin is, we believe, will be a benefit. So, you know, we simply, from the sheriff's office, helped with whatever we could, but the real work was done, first off, by the commissioners that gave their approval to start this project, so we're very appreciative of that. And then with Tanya and her crew and working through, I've never been on a project like this, so it's, it was kind of a monumental task, and I've learned a lot. And then down to Karen and the law department, putting the final touches on it. It's been quite the journey. I've learned a lot, but it's here, and we're extremely appreciative. I know both departments are really looking forward to moving in. They wish they could today. It's a very nice facility. If you haven't seen it yet, we couldn't ask for more. And I would hope that it will last us for the 99 years, Karen, for the lease. I would hope that that would last us for the 99 years, Karen, for the lease, so, again, thank you very much for your, your time, effort, and making this possible for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't see anyone else asking to speak. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. Thank you, Karen. Next item, please.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting of December 14, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Our meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December 14 resulted in one item that we're bringing for your consideration, and this item is the voluntary benefits services for Division Human Resources. The recommendation from that meeting is to accept the proposal from American Family Life Assurance Company of Columbus, deep doing business as AFLAC, and establish contract pricing at the rates listed for two years with three one-year options to renew. I'll try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
All right, thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any comment or questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate the opportunity to vote on this, this morning. I do think it's great that we are providing some opportunities for employees, but I would like to just start off by saying that I think we've got a really good benefit package on the front end, and I'll support, I'll support this proposal today, I'll be, I'll make a motion just a minute, but I want to, I want to just, you know, I guess, say that I think our, our benefit package is pretty good. Again, it's not everything maybe it used to be, but it's still a very good package overall, especially when you compare it to the private sector. I think our, our insurance program is actually pretty competitive and really very good. It is expensive, but it, it does provide great, great opportunities and benefits to our employees, and so I wanted to just start out with that and say, you know, if there are people out there that have concerns about wanting to have more opportunities, more coverage, more benefits, this provides freedom to them to make those choices. It's not necessarily for everyone, but I do think these are great opportunities, and so I, I think it's great that we have this being offered today. I think, if I understand correctly, I think there's five products that are within this package, and they're tailored for whether it's an individual or an individual and a, and a family or whatever, so there's options on, on a number of ways that employees can select different things that are interesting to them, and may lower their out-of-pocket costs throughout the year should they need those types of benefits, and so, anyway, I want to say thank you for the good work to bring this to us this morning. I would like to make a motion, we would approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any other comment? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items, Hotel Through Alpha Charlie.
Move to approve Hotel Through Alpha Charlie.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas, or any comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enry?
Aye. And next item?
Legislative Issues.
I don't know if we have anything to discuss on legislative issues at this time, so we'll call next item.
Heather?
Commissioners, now is the time for you to speak about items of interest that you'd like to bring to our attention. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this wraps up the first year on the commission. First thing I want to do is make sure that, I thank the staff very much, all the people that work for Sedgwick County. You make a difference in the lives of people every single day here in Sedgwick County, and I appreciate everything you do. I've had the opportunity to tour, I think, every one of your facilities and, and see what you do day in and day out. I want to express my deep gratitude for each and every one of you. I also want to thank Lisa and Carol in our front office, because they've made my transition and my learning experience very easy. I also want to thank the other four commissioners on the staff, on the commission that serve with me. I've learned a lot in the past year from each and every one of them, and I appreciate each and every one of them, and I've enjoyed serving with them. Finally, to the citizens, especially in District 3, but all the citizens in Sedgwick County, I want to thank them, and I want to wish each and every one of them a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very, very well said. I think we all agree with your comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, I, we had a special guest in the audience that I wanted to acknowledge, and that's Victor Hogstrom, the President of KPTS. I know that KPTS Annual Agreement was in our folder, our consent folder today, so I'm sure that's why you're here, but, but very, I'm very appreciative of everything that KPTS does, and you're a great partner for the, for the county, so I knew you were sitting out there today, so I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that. Victor and Phil Richardson as well, from KPTS, so thank you for coming today, and I'd also like to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Dennis said. It's been a, it's been a fun year, I really enjoyed the transition, and want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and thank you to the staff for their, for their wonderful work to keep our community safe, healthy, and strong.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I think it's important to point out that everything we do here, everything we vote on is paid for by the taxpayers, the hard-working men and women in Sedgwick County, and I want to know that we appreciate that, and that we work very hard to make sure that we spend your tax dollars very wisely, and, and as we go forward in the next New Year and celebrate the upcoming year, everyone, please be safe, we want you to come back and make it home to your families, and we look forward to next year. Once again, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the, the comments to our, our staff are very fitting, and I would like to also say thank you to all of our staff, they do a tremendous job. I reflect on last year, all the things we've gotten done this last year, we've had enormous amount of subject matter come before this commission, and our staff does a great job finding efficiencies and finding the best practices, bringing us great language for us to consider, and I just want to say, I'm really proud of our county, and I'll say thank you to all of our staff especially, but I agree with Commissioner Dennis, Lisa and Carol up in the front office are tremendous, really appreciate their helping us be effective in our jobs here. Without them, I think we'd be, we would flounder quite a lot. We need their help and appreciate their, their service to us in our, in our own offices here. Let me also say, yesterday, we had a great announcement in my district, District Number Five, out by K-State University, but they decided to partner with Butler County Community College, and they announced yesterday the beginning of a new program, a training, a training program out there. It's going to sort of focus on drone technology, but it's also going to be part of the, they're going to do A and P School, as well as they're, they're talking about bolstering their pilot training, and this is going to, I think, springboard into all kinds of other aviation-related job opportunities out there. So, I was out there for the announcement, it was a great, a great event to see purple being, both schools have purple as their primary color, so have them both side by side, stand there in Sedgwick County, promising to plant a new school here in Sedgwick County. I think it's just another great opportunity. I don't think this is going to diminish anything we have already going on in Sedgwick County, this is synergy. It actually adds new opportunities, and we're going to see even more good things, so I, to me, I view this as very, very good news for our, our community, and I want to say thank you to them for choosing Sedgwick County and choosing to invest capital into a new program for us to explore and to use. Anyways, I want to say again Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. I hope I see everyone safely on the other side in January. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I would add my greetings for the holiday and say Merry Christmas, and hope you all have a blessed Christmas season and a, and a great New Year, and then I would, without repeating what everyone else said, we do have a tremendous staff at Sedgwick County, a lot of hard-working people who care about their jobs and care about the folks in Sedgwick County, and it shows in their work and their work product, and it is truly appreciated, so thank you all. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, so at this time, we will adjourn the County Commission meeting.